Good to hear. Thanks. I'm glad you have to be the bearded members there. Commander.
I'm happy to start drawing, yeah.
Yeah, I was gonna say, yeah. It's not even, it's not even November either.
No, I know, it's not like, uh...
Cherry, yeah. Although Jim, I think started. I did a high five. Three or four days, and I said, "I'm just paying charity."
Okay, I'll call the village board of trustees meeting for Monday, January 7th, 2019 to order. We have a forum, and the agenda is properly posted?
Yes.
Okay, let's rise to the public, please.
My wishes to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, want a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item, item four, is public appearances, public's opportunity to speak about any subject that's not a specific agenda item. I don't believe we have any. All right, number five, discuss and consider the minutes of the regular village board meeting of December 17th, 2018. Any comments or corrections, additional?
Motion to approve.
There, second?
Second.
Motion and second, to approve minutes as presented. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, the motion passes. Number six is public hearing. Public hearing to hear interested citizens on a vacation of public right-of-way of 0.081 acres of public right-of-way. At this time, I'll open the public hearing, and I will let Erin and Lee tell us what that's about.
Well, as you recall, as part of the overall development agreement with Summit, we agreed to vacate, and I don't know if you have it with you or not, but there's a small bowl that leads into the Summit property. And it's a total of 0.81 acres. So, a vacation of a street or right-of-way like that can be done either by an adjoining property owner or the municipality. And we took on the responsibility of vacating it. So, tonight, after we have, we've published a notice that this would be discussed this evening, I'm unaware of there being any objection. I don't think anybody sitting in the audience is objecting to the right-of-way vacation. And given that fact, I would ask the board to approve the resolution in order of vacating certain right-of-way in the village of Cudage Grove. And what happens then is that this will get signed, and then we will file up with the register of deeds. You don't have a transfer of deed, you don't use a deed. And the attorney for Summit and I actually looked into whether it would just be simpler to do it that way, but it didn't work. So, we completed the vacation, and tonight, assuming that the board will approve this, then we'll get this signed and reported.
Okay.
We have the answer.
And for point of reference, that's just where that little clock tower thing is? It wasn't a driveway, is that correct? I think that's where that is.
The clock tower that doesn't work?
Yeah, right. And it just means Summit will take care of the property then?
Right.
Any other questions, please?
Well, the clocks write two times a day, right?
Twice, that's it, yes. And this was a matter of some discussion in our last staff meeting, and whether we're gonna need to bring in a Swiss or German clockmaker to help us out. But it does not include the clock tower proportions.
The northern edge.
The clock tower is still ours.
Yes. I tried, but they wouldn't take it.
I move to approve...
Oh, it's at the close of public hearing first.
Oh.
If there's no other comment, at this time, I'll close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to approve the vacation of 0.081 acres of public right-of-way.
Okay, sir, second?
Second.
Motion and second, to approve the order for vacation of 0.081 acres of public right-of-way. Any other discussion?
Just so the board knows, sometimes this comes up, Jeremy Epler from Summit did offer to come this evening, said if I felt that there was, there were any issues, I said that if there were, we would just table it until next time. So, otherwise, they would have been here.
Fair enough. All right, we have a motion and second. Is there any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Item number seven is a presentation, and this is by Olivia Perry with Dane County Planning and Development. How communities can expand their housing options in Dane County. Welcome.
Good evening. You got the invitation to be here. Let me just get this... C-H-D-O. Pull it out of your...
Yep.
So, Olivia had given us some handouts, and I had gone to the Dane County Housing Summit for a short while that morning. And so she's going to be showing us a video that was shown there. There was just a lot of good information, and that's why I'd wanted her to come and present to us, to give us more information about housing options in our community. So... I wish you were still seeing this. Okay, so... Again, my name is Olivia Perry, and I'm a senior planner in the Dane County Planning and Development Department. I've been with Dane County Planning and Development Department working in housing and economic development for about, now since 2005. So, yes, Melissa Raklef and I spoke after the housing summit. Every year, we have an annual housing summit. And I don't know, you have a screen here, so we have a pointer here. Almost here. So, basically, I'm gonna talk about what workforce housing is, and why we need it, what it impacts, and how it impacts communities, and... And... So, I'm just gonna sit down.
You can use your cursor to point to, because we can see the screens.
Oh, here?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, right. So, yeah, we're gonna take a look at a short video that we did. This whole idea of workforce housing and affordable housing is kind of complicated, so we, last year, we created a video. It's only seven minutes, but it kind of contextualizes what the issue is, and sort of gives a perspective from different stakeholders about, you know, why it matters to them, and, you know, sort of how this all, basically, how the crisis has come about. Then we'll just take a little bit more, go do a little more detail about what actually it is, and as I said, what impacts, look at the housing gap in Dane County and Cudage Grove, and some examples of workforce housing, and then community strategies for expanding housing options. I'll end with just some examples of what other communities are starting to do in Dane County. Yeah, so this is a link now. Am I automatically on Wi-Fi here, or how do I?
Not automatically. There's probably a password back on the table.
There's a password. Behind you.
I think Jim's... I thought you were getting one. Oh.
Erin is right here.
Well, I have it. I guess we'll save a couple steps. John, sorry, I didn't see you jumping. The two Johns are Johnny on the spot.
It's a top secret code.
So, what do you typically do when you have a...
If you go down at the bottom right-hand corner, I think, the next one over there.
Yeah.
D-O-C-G?
Nope, that's the one down.
Guest, gotcha. Oh, boy. No one is going to, no one's ever gonna steal this. Can you see this?
Yeah. It doesn't start public when it's mine.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's fine. There's a bunch of those cards in the back there.
Did you make that card up, Jim?
It's still clicking.
That's better.
Oh, okay. I could play it on my smartphone. Should we try it again? Is it sometimes this slow, or...
Not generally.
Should I try it again? Oh, it's asking for this, okay. Now, the O is O or zero?
Zero.
Ah.
And there's X through it, right?
The O is zero. Anybody wanna share about their Christmas vacation?
I should take a look. I'm gonna get my extension cord in a little bit. Now, that time, it was right. Did you understand that was all zeros? I don't wanna take up too much time, we could skip it.
I don't know if it's all zeros.
What?
I don't have it in front of me, but I don't...
It's C, zero, T, T. Okay, we'll try it. They're not all zeros? The zeros, I thought the zeros were Os, or the Os and zeros were the same one?
I'll read it to you.
Guest, right?
Yeah. So, it doesn't have a line through this here?
No.
C, zero.
Capital C, zero.
Lowercase t.
T.
Uppercase T.
T.
Four. Uppercase G. Two, three. Uppercase G. R. Zero. E. Uppercase E.
Hi. Maybe third time is a charm?
There it is.
Here's the connection.
Oh, it's connected.
Just click public network.
Yeah.
Good. We actually were waiting for these people.
There it is.
Okay.
There's just not enough to go around here, and they have waiting lists, very long waiting lists. You just can't afford anything more expensive, so where do you go?
So, the housing gap is the difference between the amount of income that people earn, and therefore, the house that they could afford, and the number of units that are available at that price point.
Well, I lived in Middleton first, and that wasn't going out, so that's why I moved. If I was living back where I used to, it would be three times of my social security would be for housing. And I would have enough for food and better weather. And it's not the elderly people that are looking for a home, having worked through their lives. They're not free workers. They have work, and they just don't have the money now to provide their living. And just look around, uncover the store, go out to one, look around, and see how many elderly there are. It's growing fast, and we gotta get ahead of them.
Most low-income households are working households, and they don't earn enough to have a decent quality of place to live, where they can raise their family in a safe and stable neighborhood.
So, we've been together a lot of years. I worked for Jersey Mike's up in Middleton, I'm an assistant manager.
And I've worked at a very good job in Middleton, right there, three years.
We've noticed in the last 20 years that in many places across the country, housing costs have gone up much faster than people's incomes, and that puts pressure on their ability to spend money for other things.
It took us a long time to find someplace that was affordable, that was nice. We didn't have a car to afford to move here. I mean, everything we did was by path, by walking, or, you know, trying to get vibes from people.
The apartment that we're living in is good, it's affordable. We're able to save a lot of money staying here, because they take care of the property. We wanna be here, save us a lot of money, and we're able to afford daycare for our son. Whoa, did you like that? We're able to afford food, believe it or not, it's expensive, so we're able to keep food in the refrigerator. We're able to go to work. Here it gives us reassurance that we're good, we're safe, we're feeling better.
We're really talking not just about making stable housing for families, but it helps to strengthen neighborhoods, and strengthen our schools, and stabilize our employment base. Having employees that can live closer in to the plant is a big benefit to us. We know there's a gap in the community for affordable housing, so we're working on projects in conjunction with businesses, and the city of some hurry to provide affordable workforce housing. So, workforce housing is really housing that's priced to meet the needs of the workforce that you have in an area. Tight labor market kind of forces us as a company to look outside of our general area, and it's difficult to recruit employees to want to come to work here in our land and have a 40 to 45 minute to an hour commute. I believe if workforce housing is not available, it increases the turnover rate. For many households who live far away from work, they may feel like they're saving money on their housing, but they're really spending a lot of time and money on gas and on travel. And it means that if their car breaks down, either they have to pay for their car or pay for their rent. So, they might lose their job, or they might lose their housing. When we have developers building new apartments that are affordable, it creates construction jobs, it creates additional jobs as people spend their money in the community. The city of Middleton had a workforce housing committee that said, "We want 295 minutes of affordable housing over a certain time period." Having that roadmap is key for developers to know what the communities want, so they can bring the products forward that the community is already asking for. I think the economic impact is huge. You know, we took a vacant bowling alley, two acres, and built a $60 million project. The city recognizes this increase in taxes, while at the same time, providing units at this huge range of affordability. The amount of rooms Middleton has, 76 out of 95, units that are affordable, ranging in income levels from 30% to 60% of the area median income. You know, we've got units targeted for veterans, we've got units targeted for people that have disabilities and require support services. So, you know, these products really throw a wide and diverse net for a tenant base, which really creates, I think personally, a better part of the community. You don't look at it and go, "Hey, let's have a new affordable housing project." This is as nice as any larger rated housing project. To fix the housing gap, we need a sustained partnership across all sectors. So, for employers, that can mean helping their employees to find housing. For cities, it can mean spending money or helping to approve more apartment construction or development of affordable housing. And really, for the banking and financial sector, it means financing and funding these projects.
This is the best apartment that we've had.
It's like our own private little community, where you're getting to know your neighbors, so you can actually look out for your neighbors too.
I have a sign that says, "Everyone needs a little place to call home." And I think it's so true. We don't ask for a mansion, we just ask for a little place to live.
So, hopefully, that provided a little context for our discussion today. So, we learned a little bit about what the housing gap is, housing supply gap is, the number of housing units needed at a certain price versus the number of housing units that are available at that price. Just as a note, I'm gonna use the term workforce housing. That actually refers to affordable housing, workforce housing, it refers to everything. Sometimes you say affordable housing, but then, you know, really, workforce housing is a huge initiative, but, you know, and then people say, "Well, we need senior housing," but seniors are mostly retired workers, so we just say workforce housing, and it includes housing for everybody. But just so you know, those words are interchangeable. So, why is there a housing gap, this housing gap crisis? It's a national crisis. It's not just, you know, Dane County, it's not just, you know, cities, it's everywhere. After the Great Recession, thousands of construction companies went out of business, a lot of retiring contractors, and there's been almost very little or no workforce development to bring up a new workforce. So, and in addition to that, there's been, you know, sort of, the people who remained in the industry sort of focus more heavily on higher-income housing, which is where the money was. So, we have a labor shortage for construction workers, contractors and day-layers, causing the housing prices to go up, the increase in cost of materials, and the flat wages or declined wages that have happened over the last decade, in particular for low-wage workers. The poverty rates are up well, really, you know, between 2012 and 2017, they're really, it's just, it's, they're almost the same, but because the population is growing, at this point, we have 63,000 people in Dane County who are at or below poverty. And the vacancy rates are historically low. They have gone up a little bit, but, you know, when you have lower vacancy rates, that also drives up the prices of housing. And at this point, many Dane County communities that I work with, that I know about, have 1%, 2%, or 3% or even 0% vacancy rate. Mount Corv, actually, I'm gonna be working with them over the next year, they have a 0% vacancy rate, which is a big concern to them, because they just have an employer, Duluth Trading Company just opened their headquarters there. So, they're very concerned about this issue. So, housing prices are up, and median income is generally down. These are, we don't have the ACS data from 2013 to 2018 yet, but these trends are continuing. So, what is workforce or affordable housing? Housing that costs no more than 30% of monthly income. For a homeowner, that means housing, mortgage, real estate, insurance, and utilities. For a renter, that's rent and utilities. So, we typically talk about a household that's cost burden when they're paying more than 30% of their income. An extremely cost-burdened household spends more than 50% of their income. Now, we're talking about the lower wages, and I'll show you a wage scale. But, you know, when you're making, say, $100,000, $150,000, and you're paying more than 30% of your income, you know, you might have to go without certain things, like a vacation, or, you know, certain things that are expendable. But when you have a lower income, you know, you're really sort of, you know, having to go without basic necessities. So, who needs affordable housing? Workforce. Primary driver, Dane County is very interested in making sure that we have a proper, you know, enough housing for adequate housing for the workforce. Young families, young adults just entering their careers, seniors with restricted incomes, disabled, and veterans. These are the key targets. So, just to give you a sense of sort of the group that workforce and affordable housing targets, we're typically looking at 60% or below the area median income. So, in Dane County, the area median income is very high. As you can see here, it's this figure, here, the public can't read it, 91,700 for is the area median income for a family of four in Dane County. So, but the housing that we're, like I said, we consider target is 60% or below the area median income. So, if you're looking at 50% of the area median income, a family of four, $45,850. So, those are the kinds of, this is the kind of income bracket that we're actually targeting for the workforce housing. And it goes up to $60,000, which is the bottom line in each of these graphs. So, a person, a single person, making $38,520; two-person, $44,040. This is the income level, this and below is the income level that affordable housing and workforce housing targets. Just to give you a sense of what kind of rents that that would, that they would be able to afford, these are the maximums, as you can see here, one-bedroom, $479. Oops. Are you seeing that image there? So... It'll just disappear. Okay, well, anyway, $479, if you're making 30% or below, $575 for a two-bedroom, $664, $799. These are, you know, these are lower rents, and really, the county, these don't exist in the county. So, that's why there's this need to, you know, to develop them. $959 for 60% AMI, and it's on the slow road to China. There we go, $1150 and $1329. So, like I said, these are what's affordable to people who are making 60% or below the area median income, and yet, they really don't exist. So, this is sort of a list of wages by occupation, and you can look at the starting wages and the median wages of each of these occupations to kind of get a sense of who we're talking about when we're talking about workforce housing. You can see the office and administrative support occupations. Their starting wage is $20,000. Most of these, except for the computer and management occupations, most of these have a starting salary that would require housing that, you know, would be workforce housing. Now, they, you know, a lot of these jobs do move up in the median wage, but this next slide actually shows the low-wage, high-employment occupations, which take up about 25% of our entire economy, or 23% to 25% depending. These are retail salespeople, janitors, cleaners, personal care aides. Now, this is a very, personal care aide is a very serious issue right now. We had that Dane County Housing Summit in 2017, and we had someone who runs a personal care service, you know, folks who go into the homes of elderly and disabled, and they are, they're in a crisis, because they can't, they can't, they don't have enough money to pay their workers more, and so they are having people, clients, go without their personal care attendance every day, because they actually can't find people. They don't pay enough to, for people to make, to live here, and for people to commute, as you saw in that movie, in the video, for people to commute really far away for a lower wage. The labor force attachment is very minimal. They'll, they'll take a job for 10 cents more an hour if it's closer, because it's so expensive to, you know, commute for lower-wage workers. Teaching assistants, manufacturing, dishwashers, all of these, all of these occupations, which generally, you know, can make up... generally, you know, can make up about twenty-three to twenty-five percent of our economy. Some people move through these occupations, but this is the size of the workforce that exists and has existed. So, we were kind of curious as to what employers were actually thinking. So in 2017, we did a employer workforce housing survey, and wanted to find out if employers were familiar with this idea of workforce housing, or if they were interested in knowing more, or if it impacted their turnover. So, I'll just show a few slides from the report, but seventy-nine percent said that they were somewhat or very familiar with this idea of workforce housing. And would more workforce housing reduce employee turnover? Thirty-three percent said definitely to somewhat, maybe not sure, thirty-eight percent, and then twenty-seven percent, no. And then, do you have an interest in knowing more? People had to self-identify as to whether or not their turnover was about average, lower or higher than the five years previous. And this is the about-average turnover, HTA is higher than average turnover, and BA is below average turnover. So do you have an interest in knowing more? Over half employers, whether or not they were above average, below average, or higher than average, are interested in knowing more about workforce housing. Now, this slide is a little, let me just explain. So, higher-than-average, these employers have a workforce size of approximately a hundred and seventy-five people. They pay sixteen-twenty-five an hour, and their turnover rate is about thirty-eight percent. Thirty-two percent commute over thirty-one minutes to the job. Now, when you compare these to the other, the other groups, the other groups have similar workforce sizes, but the, about-average group said that they pay fourteen-thirty, fourteen thousand thirty-two cents an hour. Their turnover rate is fairly similar, but only seventeen percent of their workforce commutes over thirty-one minutes, and all except one had access to transit. So when you have access to transit, you actually have access to a much larger geography of housing units in which to, you know, find. And then, of course, the lower-than-average folks are paying a lot more than the other ones, and they have a very low turnover rate, but they have no, no access to transit. So obviously, employers or employees are able to stay there because of the higher wages. So this is a, this is a trend that, you know, I'm letting communities know about because if you have a large employer, or medium or large employer in your community, and they're paying salary wages, it's, you know, this is sort of an indication that there's, there's a, this is about a quarter of our workforce, higher-than-average employers have said that this is an issue for them, and their workforce turnover has gone up in the last five years. So is this, you know, it's the first time we did this survey, is this a trend? But I'm just encouraging communities to reach out to their, you know, their salary employer, or the, their wage-labor employers, and make sure that, you know, that they're okay, and that this is not an issue, because when these trends continue unheeded, employers will, you know, start to look elsewhere for lower-wage workers. So what is the housing gap in Dane County? Right now, for folks who are earning thirty percent of the area median income, the housing gap is ten thousand eight hundred and twelve housing units. What that means is, if folks are earning thirty percent or less than the area median income, ten thousand eight hundred of those households have a housing gap. So they're living in a household that they can't afford, and they're paying more than they can afford. So that means that they're typically going without basic necessities. Of all the lower-income households, up to sixty percent AMI, those that are paying more than fifty percent of their incomes in rent county-wide, there's a thirteen thousand, a gap of thirteen thousand housing units, an increase of twenty-six point nine percent from 2010 to 2015. So these people are already in our communities, they're not coming in, they're already here, but their housing cost burden, or they're extremely cost-burdened. In Cottage Grove right now, you have extremely, you have extremely cost-burdened population of fifteen households, homeowners of fifteen households that are thirty percent AMI or below, or, and thirty percent to fifty percent AMI, you have seventy households. So you have eighty-five households in Cottage Grove right now that are extremely cost-burdened, and that means they're paying fifty percent or more than the area median, than their, than their income. And you have a hundred and ten households that are thirty percent AMI or below, and twenty-five households that are thirty to fifty percent AMI. So, and feel free to stop me and ask any questions if you want, or we can wait till later at the end. So the types of workforce housing, what does it look like? Or what are the, how do you get that? So new multifamily housing construction is typically what developers are doing. And this is workforce affordable housing developers, they're very different than market-rate developers, it's a completely different animal process, it's much more complicated, and we're not calling this in the housing industry, we're actually calling multifamily housing the new starter home. Because to build a new home in Dane County right now, it's a hundred and sixty-four dollars a square foot. At the average, you know, house size of about two thousand square feet, that's three-hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So people aren't building homes anymore, like the starter homes or smaller homes, they're just not doing it, they can't afford it. But three-hundred and thirty thousand dollars is a lot of money when you're just trying to start out, or you have a young family, or you're an older person on fixed income. So, we are now calling multifamily housing, you know, sort of the new starter home. So, we also can find affordable or workforce housing in existing housing rehab. If you have dilapidated or run-down, you know, sections of your, of your community, or buildings that need rehab, that's, that's also a source of maintaining affordable housing in your community. There are nonprofit developers who also provide, and I'll show you some examples of those, who also provide workforce housing. And the Dane County Housing Authority, they own a number of developments, and they have housing doctors that can work with developers to identify and develop properties. And Habitat for Humanity, which probably many of you have heard of, they used to do only single-family, but now they're actually doing single-family and multifamily in a fifty-two-acre site outside, in Sun Prairie, but just outside of the school district. They're working with a developer there to do both. And then there's some alternatives, co-housing, cooperative housing, and tiny homes. I'm not going to go into that, it's, you know, I'm just sort of, this is an overview. But, and when we talk about multifamily housing for workforce or affordable housing, as you saw the developer Jacob Klein talked about it, the housing is always a mix of incomes. It's never, you know, all, you know, tenants are thirty percent below AMI, area median income. It's thirty percent, fifty percent, eighty percent, and then their market rates. So it's a mix of, and a range of incomes. That's, that's what we found, you know, from mistakes, mistakes of the past, mixing the, you know, tenant base is very helpful and healthy for the community, plus it allows the actual development to go through, because they need the income from the market-rate units to actually help, you know, pay debt, pay the debt for these projects. So, community tools to address the housing gap, there are a number of things that communities can do, you know, provide land, tax increment financing, using general revenue, general allocation debt, loan funds, grants, fee waivers, expedite permitting. There's a new, and many of you have probably heard of this, but there's a new law, tax law, which affects tax increment financing, and if you have a tax increment district in your community and you hold it open for a year after the closing date, you can use that extra increment to create, to put towards workforce housing or affordable housing. Those, Oregon just did that, they just put four hundred thousand dollars, they kept a TIF open for a year, and they just put four hundred thousand dollars in a fund for workforce housing. Land use policy and planning, there are a whole bunch of things that you could do in this area to, to prioritize workforce housing. Looking at your comprehensive plan, identifying the number and range of units that you would like, and, but just developing policies and priorities so that there's a, you know, a, you know, a sort of cohesive understanding and a shared understanding of, you know, what it is that you would like to do, and how you would like to do it, and when. Zoning and permitting, predevelopment costs are typically a quarter of the cost of housing development. So, any ways, any way you can reduce those costs or that time that developers are using, in particular workforce housing and affordable housing developers, will help them be able to do, you know, a project in your community or a development in your community. And these are some questions you can ask yourself. Does your ordinance allow for higher density developments, such as multifamily condos, townhouses, or reduce lot sizes? Do you have density bonuses? Do your subdivision regulations allow for mixed-density or mixed-income housing? And then, you can update your comprehensive plan, and Village of McFarland invited me out there to meet with them, so, you know, kind of the way you're inviting me, and one of the things that they were really having a hard time with was that they felt like they were being overrun by, like McMansions. And they're very concerned about that, and so, one of the things that, you know, I suggested they could do until they can get a handle on it, is to just declare a brief moratorium on any new housing or any new development, until they can actually, you know, have a policy in place that, you know, sort of says, you know, going forward, we would like a certain percentage of, where this area and this area has been dedicated to, you know, higher-density housing and mixed-income housing. But, yeah, that was, one of their big complaints is that they were being overrun, they felt like it was out of control, and they also talked about how they had started to see multiple families go into the same housing unit, and that was a little startling for them, and then, yeah, a lot of them complained that they just couldn't, their kids couldn't live anywhere near them, or, you know, anywhere in Dane County, and that was sad because they had grandkids and stuff like that, but. And then leadership, you know, so if, you know, if this is some issue that you're interested in moving forward, you know, forming some sort of a committee, either, you know, a citizen committee or part of the village, the village board, that's an important thing. It's kind of a complicated issue, it's big, it takes a long time to kind of, you know, get your feet wet and understand what it is that you're talking about, and then you want to do some studies to make sure that you are meeting the needs of your current residents, and then, and then, you know, projecting the needs of the future residents. So here are examples of workforce housing, some, you know, just some images. This is a development in Madison. The image on the left is the front, and the image on the back is the courtyard, there's a courtyard, these buildings are sort of, sort of, you know, horseshoe on either side, and there's a courtyard in the middle. That is done, that was done by Stonehouse Development, they're a very prolific workforce and affordable housing developer. And this one at the bottom is a Gorman Project. This is the Jacob Klein project that you just saw, he was talking about. Here is the vacant bowling alley that was there, and here's the new project. It's called Meadow Ridge. I think seventy out of those units are workforce housing, the rest are, yeah, market rate. And then this project, I can't remember where this one is, this is a Dane County Housing Authority project, these building, these units were sort of dilapidated, and they rehabbed the whole thing and then put solar on it, and so they're, they saved, it's, I think, there were four, I think there were sixteen units altogether, they saved sixteen units from, you know, they're being torn down, but it's much cheaper to rehab than it is to build new. And these are, this is a project by Commonwealth Development, I mentioned nonprofit developers, both of these, both this one, this is on the Yoraha River in Madison, and I'm not sure where this is, but they're a nonprofit developer. And I think this is also, I think this might be Stonehouse, and that is in Madison. So, just briefly, these are the communities that are currently working at one stage or another of looking at workforce housing and how to implement workforce housing, and try to understand workforce housing. And they all presented at the Dane County Housing Summit we had in, last, in October, October 25th, there was a panel of communities, and everyone talked about where they were, and what they were trying to do, and the challenges they're facing, and some of the opportunities that they created. And so this is sort of a little bit of a snapshot of who's working on this issue in Dane County, and what it is that they're doing. So Fitchburg just finished a housing study, and Fitchburg has been, you know, developing workforce and affordable housing in their community for a while now, but they want to have a very specific plan, because when you have a plan or when you have consensus, developers are a lot more likely to come, and projects are more likely to get built. Developers will not come if there isn't, you know, sort of this idea that, you know, you actually want it, and, and some sort of outline for that. DeForest, CDA chairs pursuing the creation of a local housing coalition. Middleton has had a workforce housing strategy since, I think, 2004. McFarland, they're doing a, I had a presentation to them, I said, a few months ago, I'm not sure where they're at. Mount Morumb, we're kicking off a new planning project there in February 2019. Oregon created a housing coalition, the Oregon Housing Coalition, it's basically citizen-based, although there's some village board members on it, and they're presenting to their planning commission on the local housing gap in Mount New York on this month. And Sun Prairie has definitely been one of the leaders, they have a workforce housing committee, and they're updating their comp plan with their goals and objectives. And then Waniki created a housing task force last summer to assess their needs and develop recommendations. So, that's it. It's, like I said, it's a big subject, kind of, hopefully I didn't go too fast, but if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, or, or concerns. This is, you know, this is, it's a new issue, it's difficult, it's, you know, it's, people don't want to deal with change, it's understandable, it's a very, you know, it's, it's a sticky thing, but every community is, you know, doing what they feel is appropriate for them, and, you know, so no question is too small or too big, or, you know, yeah. And I do have some fact sheets, there are some on the table that actually, you know, give some basic fact sheets about, does it affect your taxes or school districts or whatever, and they're on the counter as you, as you go out.
Any questions? Olivia?
I have a question, I appreciate the information, and there's certainly a need here, I mean, if anyone goes to local establishments, whether it's a grocery store, cafes, there's help wanted signs in all the windows, and, you know, who's going to work for nine to twelve bucks an hour and be able to afford a three-hundred-and-thirty or three-hundred-and-fifty dollar home? The question I hear most commonly is, people are opposed against higher-density, income-qualified, whatever you want to call it, just based on potential increase in criminal activity. But, do you have any facts or discussion points to counter that?
Yeah, there, there's no research that says if you have mixed-income housing, you're going to have increased criminal activity, that I know of. Now, in the old days, in the sixties and seventies, when they put these giant high-rises up and put everybody in there and like segregated, I mean, it was horrible, you know, but we don't do that anymore, you know, the planning community learned its lesson. And because it's, it's a mixed-income community, and these are very, you know, basically, they're really kind of high-end, I mean, you know, some of these places are a lot nicer than my house, you know, I mean, and that's, and they're all like that, and they're, so, so even if you're a lower-income person, and they're, all the units are the same in the house, in the apartments, so there is no evidence that I know of, but I can do some further research, leave me your card, and I'll do some further research. I haven't read any of that, just because, you know, really driving this whole sort of development program, if you will, is the Wisconsin Housing and Economic Development Association, because they give tax credits, which allow these developments to be built every year. And there, they, they have decided, I mean, it's also a federal policy too, but they have decided that, you know, you can't have more than a certain amount of people who are lower-income and mixed-income, so, so we kind of feel like we've got the sweet spot now. So twenty or twenty-five percent are market rate, and then there's things from thirty percent to sixty percent. And if you begin to, and, and everyone is monitored, if you're, if you have tax credits in a project, in all the projects that have tax, every single apartment is actually monitored, and has to be monitored, in order for those tax credits to remain in place. So the housing, the housing developers that do this kind of work are vigilant, and they have to be, because they have tax credit, they have investors that are, you know, you know, wanting, wanting a return. So, but I'm happy to, you know, sort of do some more research on that, but there's no evidence that I know of with this new model that, you know, has been in place for the last ten years, I would say.
Any questions?
Yeah, nobody else does. I had heard that there, that single-family housing is a bigger tax burden to communities. Can you explain that? Is that...
Well, I mean, when you think about it, you know, you take up a lot more land, and you have a lot more infrastructure with single-family homes than you do with the thirty or forty or fifty unit, which is right on top of each other, so the, so that, so the economies of scale make multifamily more efficient and more lucrative for, higher-density development does that, yeah.
And then, I think I heard some reasons for multifamily housing, such as that you had mentioned, like adult, kids moving back to be near their parents, is that, it's like one reason to have multifamily housing or affordable housing?
Well, yeah, that's, I mean, from what I've heard in the communities, yeah, I mean, that's a big issue for people, yeah, like, you, your kids, your grandkids, you can't, they can't live anywhere near you, and that's, that's, you know, that's what makes community, when you can have family around, you know, so that's been a, pretty pervasive in the communities that I've talked to. And what are some of the other things, I guess? Right, seniors, I talked to a senior, bless her heart, in, I want to see the community, but she was distraught because she had lived in this community her whole life, raised her family, and her husband and her, had retired, you know, she's, is actually still a daycare provider in her sixties, and she didn't know it was going to happen because they're, you know, and they live in a very modest house, but she didn't know it was going to happen because their taxes keep on going up, and when you're on a limited income, you know, pretty soon, she's like, we're not going to be able to live in our home, and where do we go? This is, this is our life, and, you know, we have to go two counties away, and everything we've ever built and hoped for and wanted in our life is here. And, yeah, so it was, it was very, very, very touching story. Her husband worked at, I think, Oscar Meyer his whole life, and, you know, he was a vet also, but they were, and, you know, this is a very common thing, and it's, and it really, unfortunately, we have to face this as a nation, as a community, but it really starts to break up communities when people have to leave, and, yeah, so, right. And I think, I think one of the things that also... And I think, I think one of the things that also I'm hearing is that, you know, one, like, housing is where jobs go to sleep at night and, you know, you are providing, Cottage Grove is providing, you know, employers, employees for other communities in Dane County and vice versa. So it's a very integrated thing. And so, you know, communities are starting to think that like it's, everyone like should do a little bit because if something, we can't leave it all to Madison. Now Madison has half the population, but they also have 63 to 64% of the lower income residents. And I think they're starting to feel a little bit of the burden like, hey, we're doing more than our fair share. Maybe you could too. So do a little. So, I mean, that's sort of something I'm hearing too. But I don't know if I answered your question. You said why multifamily?
Yeah, that was...
There's so many reasons, yeah.
Right. And even like if families were downsizing too, if they got divorced or lost their family and they have kids and you couldn't afford their house, it would give them an option to stay in the school district then too. Do you know what businesses look for in a community, like as far as housing options? Is that in your...
When they're locating or when they're expanding? I mean, when you're locating, that's a different thing than when you're expanding, but certainly you're looking for, you know, I mean, depending on what kind of business it is. I mean, if you're a higher wage, you know, if you're a tech firm or, you know, pharmaceutical or biotech, you know, it's a different story, but when you're, you know, manufacturer like the one we saw in the film from Sun Prairie, you know, he's very concerned. He's, you know, having issues with turnover and he pays it, as you saw, $2 more an hour than the folks who actually had access to transit. So, you know, I think that employers are typically looking for an available workforce, number one. And then, secondly, where are they coming from? Because they're savvy to, you know, to the idea that like if they're only paying 14 or 16 dollars an hour, you know, and my workforce has to commute 45 minutes, that's not a very solid workforce. Because when you're, you know, you're commuting 45 minutes for a 14, 16 hour job, you know, you don't have strong labor force attachment. Those employer employees, you know, one car repair, one car accident, you know? And then also you're separating families from each other because if you work 45 minutes or an hour from your family, now, I mean, some people do, but if something happens with the kids, you know, you're, it's a, you know, so you easily miss work. And anyway, that's a challenge too.
So as far as you brought up that other communities have housing committees.
Yeah.
We're all, assuming all the ones that were on that list have housing committees of some sort. They presented at the housing summit.
McFarland is the only one who didn't present at the housing summit. I don't know where they are yet at since I've last talked to them, but...
So the benefit of having a committee on housing is to look into like affordable housing and options for a community?
Yeah, I mean, you know, it's a big subject and it's difficult and it changes hard. And so that community is really sort of, would be the primary, first of all, they want to learn a little bit more about it themselves. And what a lot of these committees end up doing is doing a housing needs assessment for their own community. So you can have your own numbers, you know, in real time. The housing gap report that we just updated has some information, but it's nice for a community to get really specific and be able to work with a consultant to, you know, ask the questions that they want to have answered. But that housing committee really is sort of the go-between between the village board and the residents because it's such a big issue. And so they're the ones who would typically kind of coordinate the process of, you know, education and working with the consultant to develop plan, you know, housing needs assessment and potentially recommendations that they would, you know, present to the village board or the...
Thank you.
All right, number eight. Item A, discuss and consider new operators license for year July 2018 to June 2019 for Joel McCann, Whitney Harriet, Ethan Adveri, if I'm saying that right, Jen Wagner and Alicia Smith. Chief, it looks like there were no problems with any of these individuals from your memo.
That's correct.
Okay. So we could take all five at once if anyone wants to make a motion to approve?
Motion to approve all five.
Okay.
Second.
Motion and second to approve. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Abosed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Reports from village boards, commissions and committees. First, we have joint fire department committee. Item A is discuss and consider contract for provision of fire protection and rescue services by and between Cottage Grove firefighter department incorporated and Cottage Grove fire district and the town of Pleasant Springs for 2019 to 2023.
So the fire commission actually approved this agreement. It's for the next five years. Like Lee had sent it out as part of an email leading into the meeting. My understanding is the town of Pleasant Springs approved it last month, so now we just need the town and village to do the same unless there's something else that must be like, raise questions.
And we're now acquainted with virtually every word in it because there were some questions on it, but I think that in the future, this was, I think I lost in the transition and it's something that I'd like to have joint fire talk about and that is whether like the attorney or whoever is the chair of that committee, the attorney for that municipality serves as the attorney for joint fire or do you want to go out and get your own attorney? That's just, that's something to think about for the future.
Okay. Is there a motion then to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the...
Second. Okay. Motion and second to approve the contract for provision of fire protection and rescue services by and between Cottage Grove volunteer fire department, Inc. and the Cottage Grove fire district and the town of Pleasant Springs for 2019 to 2023. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Abosed? Abstentions? Motion passes.
When is the next joint fire meeting?
January, last Monday in January.
Yeah.
Twenty eighth.
The land needs to...
Yeah. Reports from Billy Doster's committee?
No report.
James?
No report.
Yeah.
No reports.
Alyssa, you have a couple of things on here.
Yeah, thank you. Before I get to that, I just wanted to note, first, a next door, there was a thank you of sorts to our Cottage Grove police department and their, their way they handled the event efficiently and professionally. So I just wanted to say thanks, chief, for all that you guys do.
You're welcome.
And to note that it is being noted by the community, so I appreciate that. So as far as, I was just looking for more information that I hope that we can maybe do a little bit on about forums and what exactly they are and, because there's different types. And if that would be appropriate for the next meeting agenda, I had that...
Yeah, I think, if I remember right, we pretty much, every time we have a board or several members, we'd have to revisit this, what's a forum, what's a negative forum, all that kind of thing. So I'll let Lee chime in if he has anything.
Well, if the board would like, I can update the materials that I have. Probably be looking at an hour or two of time and try to turn it into a more of a table or checklist that you can look at. I've got, someday I'll do a Robert's Rules light checklist, but for now, we'll just go with this. So that's mine and that would be a time estimate for it.
And then also that would be useful for, in the future, if there is turnover on the board for future members to stay. That information would be available.
There's enough information anyway. You're getting used to this, so.
Right.
That would be good to have.
And then the, as far as emergency management plan, I sent out, I think, that email and then Troy had provided what he had regarding our emergency plan, which looks like it's from 2014 and hasn't ever been officially presented to the board. So I contacted Dane County and they have kind of like a checklist of things. Just, um, there's an extra one. But I'm hoping that maybe emergency management can work on, because I know that we haven't met for a couple of months now. And I think it's important that we have a plan in place by the article. It's by state law that we have to have a plan and each community can have their own plan. It's not specific. Like, that's just a guideline that I passed out, but right now, we really don't have anything specifically. And I checked out Oregon, they have theirs online and 64 pages of heads like checklist. While we don't necessarily have to do that, I think it's important that we maybe can look into it more. And I don't know if emergency management committee is going to do that or looking into that or if you want to see what, what they want to do or...
You know, I can, I can talk to the committee chair and get you on the next agenda.
Right. Well...
I think it's February 7th, Thursday?
Yeah, Thursdays don't work for me any longer. So, but, I mean, that is what emergency government committee is supposed to be working on. And it's, and even the plan that you had sent to me that they're supposed to bring it before the board and that it's supposed to be looked at at least yearly, which I've been going for a year and I didn't even know this existed, so. If that, could be something that you at least bring up to the chair, that would be great.
Oh, me too.
Otherwise, I don't know if that's something that the board would want to look into more. Just because they're supposed to work with all the departments and I'm not sure that every department in our community's had a say at this point either.
Right. Modeling after another community is probably okay rather than reinventing the whole wheel, but I mean, it's a good idea to look at what other communities have.
I know the exercise that's been done, that the response from Dane County and the state is that we're much more prepared than most other communities.
Great.
Maybe we can add that for the next joint town and village board meeting for discussion point.
Yeah.
Because I was the chair of that committee back when, I had updated, it hadn't been updated for 15 years. And it was six months I was trying to get the village and town to meet and for whatever reason, they wouldn't. And then I deployed and handed it off to a town chair and probably it got updated in 2014, which is good. But, yeah, it really should be approved and adopted by both municipalities.
Okay. That would be a good subject for our joint meeting.
Great. Great. That was...
Okay. John, you have requests for update on community hearing regarding Shady Grove.
Yeah, I was just looking because I think we directed staff to possibly get with the developer or the attorney and put some dates, maybe have a community hearing.
Yeah, I spoke with their attorney. They're getting their development team back together after the holidays and vacations and stuff. So we're going to meet with them either Friday or early next week. And we do that, then we'll finalize the date for the neighborhood meeting. I know this room's open February 5th, 6th and 7th. It's Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. I think those are pretty good possibilities, but we'll finalize that. And anybody who's gotten a notice for any of the hearings would get a notice for that as well.
Thank you.
John, what do you think?
No report.
Okay. I had a couple of things on here. First item was discuss and consider updating our zoning ordinance, which is 325-110, if you look in the ordinances on our website, regarding protest petition. And I'll let Lee chime in if I'm wrong here, but as I understand it, effective January 1st, the protest petition is not a requirement, that it will not, that it doesn't need to require any three quarters of super majority vote, is that...
Well, as of January, well, this is all part of Wisconsin Act 243 that occurred in 2017 and there were a number of changes that were made. And I didn't really put much time into this until I got some direction from the board. Speaking of which, am I supposed to do the forum thing?
Anybody object? Anybody could vote on that or, does anybody object to giving Lee an hour's of time to put something together, make something huge or something?
Can it be part of that binder that Matt has agreed to maybe as a goal for new candidates? And it's a binder that, you know, if you don't run for reelection or if you get voted out, just pass along to, you turn it back to Lisa or whoever, you know, with her tablet and...
And he'll, he's very careful about putting any of my stuff in his folder, so I'll...
Any objection to that?
That's fine.
Okay. All right. Okay. In 2017, there were a series of changes to the state statute and I don't know, I don't know the whole history of who was, you know, kind of behind it, but they made it really, I think, more difficult for municipalities to regulate developers in many ways. For example, types of sureties that developers were required to put up by municipalities, now that's changed. And this was one of the things that was included in there and that was to do away with the protest petition that was in 6223-7. And what, what happens is that if you get a certain number of people together, and we'll go into all the details of that, but just as the, the protest petition has been filed on the Shady Grove, but what happens then is that, the long and short is that you need a three-quarter vote by the village board to make a zoning change. Now, as I understand it, three-quarters would be six of the seven board members. Turns out to 5.25, but apparently they round up, not down in the world of Robert's Rules. So...
Split a person apart, there is a... Can't split a person apart, there is a...
Well, you know, like 5.2 families or something like that. But that is a very difficult burden to, to meet. And so I guess the feeling in the legislature was that they wanted to stop these types of protest petitions and they changed the statutes. They did not, however, say that municipalities had to follow that change.
Right.
And that was apparently on the table and assuming that the board gives me direction to get some additional information, I can find out, you know, what were the, I would talk to the Wisconsin Legislative Bureau and I'd find out, you know, who is the one that was pushing this? What was their rationale? What were the arguments against doing it? And then the board can decide whether they want to take that language out of the ordinances.
This is part of the zoning ordinance, we'd have to go to the plan commission. You have a board hearing there.
The last sentence of our ordinance reads, "shall not be contacted except by a favorable vote of three-quarters of the full village board membership." And it doesn't mean you don't have to let people protest or talk to us or, you know, that we're not going to listen to amidst, the state statute doesn't require it, our ordinance does, so it's one of several ordinances that sometimes get out of compliance in state statute really.
Well, it's, it's not out of compliance, though. You can have an ordinance in this case that's more strict, so that's...
Right. They're not required to do that.
Right, that's incorrect. You can't say that it's not required to change, it's, you don't have to change it. You can leave it as a stronger document to protect our citizens.
But the legislative intent was to stop some of the regulations, if you look at the annotations in the state.
Right, but in that case, it slipped in probably by special interest, as we all probably have known. And that's, I'm sure, really, yeah. So this is in a long list of various ordinances that we'd have to take a look at. I mean, I'd like to take a look at our hotel ordinance, but it won't for this because if you want to forget a hotel in this community, our current one is at 8%, which is way out of line with any other community around here. is way out of line with any other community around here. That's just one example. That's way further up on my list of things to do rather than this.
And John, just picking up on that is something that we kind of talked about at the end of last year, and that is, there are a number of ordinances that each of you at different times have said, "Well, why do we have this or why do we have that?" And the ordinance committee has pretty much gone, gone silent for a period of time, dormant. And so I think that that's one of the challenges for the board is to say, "Well, okay, we do want the ordinances kept up on a, on a regular basis. Some of those can be handled at the committee level."
Right.
And that's what I've always said to staff is, if you find something that you think needs to be changed, that might be the most effective way to do it. But it may be worth our while to say, "Well, okay, let's take a look at it and give us a list of ordinances that you think should be reviewed and then prioritize them."
If you find out a hotel, the ordinance, that I don't care, that's fine.
That's the room tax deal.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I think that would be maybe the way to do it is to say, "Well, all right, here's a list of ten or fifteen or whatever ordinances." And this is the effect that it would have. And, and so we say, "We're gonna the first five or the first ten or the whatever," and then, you know, start ranking them.
And like we said, there's probably a lot more backstory to this than when he's able to give us off the cuff. And I'm fine informing us what the intent was, doing a little bit of research on it, because we need to know what the intent of it was.
To me, I'm just curious, in your experience with the village, how many times has there been a protest petition?
I think this is the third. The first was down on, it's down by PDK, or Stepco.
Oak Street?
No.
School Road?
No, no, no. On the other side, the street that goes where it's fifteen miles an hour.
You have to describe it better than that.
Southern Grange.
Check it out.
Okay, so for a period of time, Troy, Southern Grange was like a small enclave of political activity. Everything, a lot of people from the board came out of there, a lot of, well, and-
How many, where is Southern Grange?
No, but I mean, I, I mean, I just remembered that, you know, I didn't even know where it was at first and then I became very well acquainted with it. But it's, you know, you can put whatever, you can put whatever label you want on there, but there was that one, I think there was one other, and then there would be this one. So it's only, it's been three times.
So, so this isn't really a hot-button, high priority, I have to agree with John, if there's other things that really need to be looked at, long before this?
I would say it's a hot-button item when you're the one who wants to get the zoning and there's a protest. It's not, from a priority point of view, I agree.
Which small message protects the citizens?
Um, the fact that-
You still have to have a majority vote. You just don't have to require the super majority vote.
I don't know, I, I just think it sends you a long message.
Is the protest petition for, like, does it cover people in and out of our community?
Well, not right now, yes. Right now, the vast majority of people who have filed the protest petition, I think you, assign me here, please, the attorney. Would you agree that most of them are town residents?
Yes, because Shady Grove is sort of unbeloved and surrounded by the towns and usual subdivision.
Well, yeah, I mean, I'm not discouraging, I'm just, I just confirm the facts. But it, they, they have as much right to file a protest petition as village-
Yeah.
Right. There's good of why if it was all within the village and didn't involve anyone-
Right.
This is not exclusive of all the towns. It's just, yeah.
So I, I think that from my point of view, as, what I would ask is, do you want this reviewed at all or do you want to create a list of ordinances to be reviewed and then allocate a certain amount of time towards it? How do you want to proceed?
I think we do create a list of the ordinances, not just, you know, pinpoint one or two, just a list of what's our top priority.
And I think we jumpstart or get reinvigorated the ordinance review committee, which has kind of been non-existent for the last two or three years.
Definitely come back. Do we have, do we have an ordinance committee?
Yeah, we sit on the website as being a member, but I haven't met it.
I don't know if they, if we have a number right now, but I mean, we've had it, we've had a series of, of members. And maybe what I could ask you to do is, you know, for the next two meetings or so, as you meet with your committees and staff, the same thing, if you, if there are some ordinances that you see, that you think should be changed, bring them up and then we'll create a list and then we can prioritize them.
Can do that as well. And because this was a hot-button issue, where this came to the forefront, anyway, I haven't been knowing about it either, if it was brought up, but when stuff comes to your attention, you want to deal with it?
Yeah, I think some of the irony of this is that probably if Shady Grove had not occurred, this would be the kind of change that people might not have paid much attention to. But it did, the, some place in the legislature, they specifically decided not to cover any municipal ordinances. Each municipality had to be cast to make their own decision on what they want to do.
Right. Okay. I'll make a motion to table this till next meeting and everybody can feel free to, I guess, to send it to Lee or Matt, I guess, other ordinances that they want looked at for updating.
Oh, second.
Okay. Motion in second to table till next meeting of January twenty-first?
Are we gonna have enough time to even look at a list and prioritize?
That's interesting.
That's, I think you should table, if you're gonna table, table for longer than that, there's no way you can get a list together or reconvene the ordinance group back together for them to get a chance of, I mean, that's-
You don't have to table it for a definite time, I guess, if you just table it, but there's something that you need to do with it.
Well, I think that's, that's still debatable and certainly it's not something we have to do.
Go. All right. Motion in second to table, all in favor of the Senate. Close abstentions, motion passes. Second item is discussed and considered joint village-town board meeting. This has been, we talked about this before, scheduled for January thirty-first. I think it's our turn to host it here, which would be, I think, six-thirty P.M. And I've already talked with Kim Bannigan, the town clerk. She's sent it to her members, we're looking at it tonight, so if there's anything they want on the agenda, anything we want on the agenda in the next week or two, that has to get to Lisa and Kim Bannigan at the town. They have to put it out. When would you have to have that up by Lisa?
It would be the Friday before.
Okay. So any agenda items have to be here hopefully by noon on Friday, the twenty-fifth of January, so they have a chance to get it out for closing.
Can we have the emergency management plan?
Yeah.
In its entirety, maybe as part of that packet for discussion?
Sure. And like, as with most things, we ask for some background information. Melissa's got this, you can scan it in for that agenda item, so we know.
Yeah, they have the same information.
Okay. All right.
Jack, another item be asking whether the village and town want to go back to the, what they used to do was, if you had a joint committee, wherever was the chair, the attorney for that municipality handled if a legal matter came up.
Right.
Unless, for some reason, that attorney didn't want to do that kind of work again. But, you know, with police, we were, we would always do it off and on. Same with fire. So just see if, if they would be comfortable with that.
Okay. So alternate legal services?
Providing their, their attorney all of those plans and those agreements between the village and following fire department, et cetera.
Alternate legal services to correspond with the chair personship of the committee.
Okay. I mean, would you like any staff to attend or?
I think it would be helpful, depends on the agenda items, I guess.
They were not the last one, were you guys?
Yeah.
You had the last one.
I think the first one.
Yeah.
I'm not sure if the staff are attending.
I mean, we don't have to, it's gonna be on the U-P-.
Yeah, they may get us, so. If there's things that come up, we can just refer back to staff, refer them at to lead or whatever, so.
Just have our people record it, I guess.
That's fine, just checking.
But would Lisa be here to take the minutes?
We have to have somebody taking minutes, right?
I can.
Or, or she could follow the recording, too.
Okay.
Unless it didn't record them.
That sounds like a good challenge.
Would it be, would it be smart to maybe have a discussion item on Flynn Hall, because I think the Finance Committee recommended we don't-
Yes.
Continue partnership, but we realized we needed six months' notice, so it'll be June of 2019 in order to give them notice to figure out where the income goes, if it goes back into the building or if it goes into, you know, some sort of town fund. I guess I'd just like a little bit of background on the Flynn Hall finances.
Okay.
So you want the town to bring information about Flynn Hall then along with, or?
If they can, whatever they provide. How much income's generated, how much does it, because I know the Lions, you know, the Legion, the Boy Scouts, they all use it. And I know a number of the civic organizations donate back in there, but, you know, where does that income, when they reserve Flynn Hall, where does that go? And is it used to, you know, continue the operation or does it go to a special, another account?
Okay. Anything else?
Do you want to talk about the boundary agreement with Madison again or no?
There's an update on it, I guess.
I know that Melissa and I were at the meeting with the town and the Madison planners.
Yeah.
And I know they met with Aaron and-
We'll be discussing it further tonight. It's probably important for you guys to establish first if you want to have that discussion and then figure out your own objectives and goals for having them before.
Maybe too early, yeah.
Yeah. But then I'd probably a meeting with City of Madison, their staff and the town in a meeting just for that discussion would probably be good.
Okay.
All right. Anything else? All right. Lee, anything else on legal briefings or status updates?
We had received a contact from the Coring Ridge developers.
Oh, we still?
They usually contact me on Friday, eleven, four, or five. And so we're trying to get that back on track in terms of, they, they have paid their invoices up to date and we're gonna try to get them to give us a timetable. So I assume that they'd be shooting for trying to get something done by the spring.
All right. Hey, Matt?
Tomorrow, Sean and I are meeting with, would be to discuss things with them per direction from the board. And to get to Sean, he's, yeah, he's excused tonight.
Okay. Aaron?
Got a little sad news over the holidays. Arnie Mulman, who was a very dedicated and enthusiastic member of the Village Plan Commission for a long time, passed away at the end of December. He was eighty-three. So I'm starting to recognize irony and often I can do one of those things.
All right. Chief Labor, anything else?
No.
Jay Giddy?
No.
Oh, I had a question for Jay Giddy.
Yeah.
Just about the upcoming meetings with utility and public works, the things to be discussed. Is there any update on the fight path?
Nothing beyond, like last time we had a meeting, right, we got notified by Dade County. They said documentation will come in September, early March, so, but that was the one that applied for construction in 2019. The other one, the TAC grant is also waiting for documentation, but it's a much slower process than that. And that was on separate construction for a few years.
Thank you.
All right. You say anything?
Yes. There will be no primary for February. Yes, that is good news. We do have one candidate for village president, which is John Williams. We have six candidates for village trustee, which we chose valid order today, that went out to the candidates. And then next week is Crossing Guard Recognition Week, January fourteenth to the eighteenth, so remember if you see your crossing guards, to thank them, they do an awesome job.
Deb?
Yep. Just wanted to give you an update. Through December thirty-first, we processed over eight and a half million dollars in taxes, which is about half of the total collection that we will be doing. And this, that's pretty much up track with the last several years, so doing well there. Friday was Cynthia's last day, the utility clerk, utility clerk here, she was here for nineteen and a half years. We will be posting a replacement position, but if you remember, the budget we're replacing here with an admin assistant, that's the one we'll be posting tomorrow. The utility clerk actually posting will happen to start with the start date of July one. And that, the utility clerk will be moving down in the municipal service. And then also, John had asked about the personal property write-off, the letters to the three businesses. Letters went out the, towards the end of December with a final date to be paid by the twenty-fifth of January. And stated in the letter that if final payment was not done, then some type of publishing for public view would be happening based on the board's direction. To this point, I haven't heard anything, so. I have a copy of it, whatever anybody else is.
All right.
And then we can put a future agenda item then in February for the ones that haven't responded or if it's not taken care of, then the board can decide how you guys want to have it published, if it's on, on the website, in the paper, on Facebook, or-
Okay.
How they want to do that.
But they'll pay, so we won't have to worry about it.
Yeah. Cool. Jack, I do think that we should give Deb special recognition for coming tonight after her weekend loss by the Bears.
You mean Bears?
Well, yes, I can. I'm quite happy about it.
Six times.
But he scored more than the, anybody else on the team, besides the-
Yeah.
We're all in mourning.
All right. Eleven A, discuss approval of vouchers. Any comments, questions, and votes?
The overpayments, is that common this time of year? All those separate, small, overpayments?
It all depends on how the TAC, how the mill rate falls. Most mortgage companies base it up on the prior year, so, yeah. It's not very common this year.
Is the, to the Cottodog PTO, the gift cards, was that the script?
Yep.
Is there a second?
A second.
Motion in second to approve vouchers as presented. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Close abstentions, motion passes. Correspondence, just a couple of things here, I'm gonna leave the copies with Lisa. One is from Deer Grove BMS, and I know Kevin, Lisa already on top of this, just payment charge care of the Deer Grove BMS. And then some final calculations for our transportation aid from the state, so that's about nine-hundred-and-seventy thousand dollars. All right, upcoming community events, anything?
Well, on February second, we have, in the morning, we have a Lions breakfast from eight till eleven. In the afternoon, we have a raffle, two-hundred raffle. It's almost sold out, but I have a couple tickets left for that. And that's a lot of fun. You serve a beer again, complimentary beer, so it's a good, good time in the afternoon.
Okay.
Afternoon, right?
The Optimists have a now event, New Optimists Wanted, on January twenty-ninth at seven o'clock at Flynn Hall. Everyone's welcome.
Anything else? All right, future agenda items. If anybody has any ordinances to look at, can I have? If anybody has any arguments to look at, can I have? Anything else?
I guess my forum report.
Forum, yeah. Anything else? All right. So we have at this point. At this point, I'll make the motion that the Village Cottage Grove Village Board enters into closed session pursuant to Statute of 1985, parent one, parent C, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. This closed session is to discuss boundary agreements and Comer Park Kid 5 land sale negotiations, and negotiations for terms of potential development in Kid 10. And the Village Cottage Grove enters into closed session pursuant to State Statute of 1985, parent one, parent C, considering employment, promotion, compensation, and performance evaluation data of any public employee over which governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, administrators' evaluations. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we need a roll call.
Allen?
Aye.
Hallmore?
Aye.
Hendricks?
Aye.
Limber?
Aye.
Redcliffe?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Okay, we're in closed session. We'll take five minutes if you folks have a chance.
I'll put a point.
Alabama, huh?
Yeah.